Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Libby? Becky? Robert?
Fritz?
Here.
And Tanya, I see your name up there, but we have to see your picture as well to have you for quorum.
I'm here.
Thanks, Tanya.
I declare we have a quorum. Okay, can I get a motion to approve minutes from 11:15 and 12:06?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 11:15, 21. And, do we want to do it separate?
It's just and, you want to do it separate? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I say that. Make a motion to approve the minutes from 12:06 at 21.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I say that. Thank you. Unfinished business, council to consider adopting ordinance number 2021-11B in relations to the bond assurance for the MBH, MVAH project at 215 South Madison Street, second reading.
I can cover this one. So this is a project we've been talking about for the better part of this year, actually, now. And I think, Pete, no, Pete's not back on. He may be zooming back in, but we've discussed this at length. This is the second reading of this ordinance. The Economic Development Commission met before the council tonight. They took all the actions that they needed to do. Passed a resolution approving the bonds and then also approved the project report that described the workforce development, the not to exceed $235,000, the repayment utilizing the TIF revenues that are generated by the project, not other TIF revenues. And it's important that the public be mindful of that as well. And so this will be the final action by the town council to adopt this ordinance that would authorize the issuance of those paper bonds. Again, no bake involved. This is kind of an in-house financing, the law allows. One piece of this that Pete mentioned to the Economic Development Commission, and Adam and I had a call with Pete last week about this. We don't know, and I'll preface this, we don't know how this is going to affect the overall project, if at all. But project costs, construction costs that they put out to bid a year and a half, almost two years ago, and started getting estimates, have gone up north of $2 million, so $2.1 million, which cuts into MBAH's ability to even make the project go. MBAH has been working with the state, and the state is trying to help MBAH come up with a solution so that we can still have the project, still provide the workforce housing, still have the quality build and everything. One solution that they are in the process of trying to get approved, if something needs to be done, would be to reduce the number of units in the development from 58 to 50. By reducing those, and they're still working out the numbers, so by reducing, so eight units would cover that gap or cover the increase in construction costs so that the project still goes. Adams looked at the layout of the project, and if those eight units are removed and we go to 50 units, it'll come off of the north end of the project, is that right? And so it'll actually create more green space and will allow them to have a more traditional water, stormwater detention basin, instead of having to store that underground so they utilize the savings there. So we don't know, as we sit here tonight, whether that eight-unit reduction would, is going to be necessary. But everything else in the project will be, as we've discussed, Buzz is looking at the numbers to make sure, and preliminary, doesn't think it's going to affect the payback. And again, if the revenues coming in from the rent are lower because of the eight units, I suspect that that will mean it's not going to cost the town any money. It may just extend the amount of time that it's going to take for MBAH to get their money back. All right, so it's not going to be a detriment to the town or any sort of financial exposure on the town side of things. It's just how does MBAH make this project actually go in light of COVID and increase in construction costs and materials and so forth? So the timing, they still believe, is going to be the same to try to accomplish and, you know, get this completed and built. They're still hoping to close the financing first part of January. Bids or the bonds, if you approve this ordinance, would issue before the end of the year and move forward. But I did want to note that there's a possibility that the 58 units would drop to 50. And if that were the case, then we would just make that adjustment on the development agreement, because it states 58 units right now, so we would make that change down to 50. And then maybe, I talked to Dennis, and he doesn't think that there's any changes that we're, there are any changes we would need to make in the bond documents, so. Pete jumped on, but I think I just covered what Pete was probably going to say, so Pete's off the hook, I guess, unless the council has any questions.
Any questions? Does he back from the town have any questions? What's the timeline on when we will know definitively on the number of units?
Pete, did you hear that?
Yeah. We have a submittal into the state that went in last week. We would anticipate a 14-day turnaround, so certainly before the year is up, we hope to have a response from them as far as do they want us to cut the units or not. So it should all be finalized hopefully by the end of the year.
And if no action is taken on this tonight, how does that impact you?
It wouldn't necessarily impact us if, as long as we could come back and finalize, you know, at your next session, or if the thought is, is wait till we find out whether there's a 50-unit cut or not, and then come back. I don't foresee in.
Yes, our next meeting is the 3rd, right? Yes, yes, January 30th.
That would not create any delays for us, I do not believe.
I think I'd rather know what we're dealing with before we get final authorization. This is the second reading. That's just me though.
Do they consider Monday, the 3rd, the holiday part of New Year's Day?
No, we're actually on Friday.
Okay, you're doing great, okay.
If it's not going to impact their project at all, and I think I'd better realize what we're really working with. If it's not going to have any impact at all, there's no reason to. Hopefully.
Well, Pete, do you know if it'll affect the closing on the financing for you? I know you're targeting early January for that. I didn't know if, I suspect having the council's final authorization to issue the bonds would affect that, but maybe January 3rd is fine. Just want to make sure.
Um, you know, there's, there's so many. Sorry, I couldn't remember if I was on mute there. There are so many moving parts, any chance I have to, you know, clear one hurdle is always good. Just because once this is approved and finalized and we have final documents, they get circulated and, you know, lenders and investors do all their eye dotting and T-crossing and fact-checking to confirm everything's in place. So certainly, you know, we're hopeful, we would, we would be hopeful things could be approved tonight, but I really don't foresee any major issues or slowdowns to the project waiting to the 3rd. The only preface I would have to that is, is that as the state approves this, they may potentially look to see if we have everything else approved. I feel pretty confident that the state wants to solve the issue with the unit reduction. So I do feel that ultimately, we will likely end up as a 50-unit development. So knowing that, I don't know, hopefully that that substantially changes anything from the standpoint of the end result. Certainly, we would have loved to have built the additional eight units. But certainly, the COVID cost of construction has, has created that situation. So I do feel very confident that part of the solution will be this reduction. That said.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, what were you going to say?
One of my concerns was, what does the project mean for you if the state does not agree to go to 50 and it remains at 58?
The thought is, is there's probably just a delay. This is a systemic problem that the state's dealing with and all developers. In this funding round that we were funded in, there were 17 developments funded. And all 17 have this issue on varying scales. Based on the feedback we got from the state, we are probably the norm. No projects from this funding round have closed to date, is what I was told from the state. So with this, we still are hopeful we're going to be one of the first ones. The state is making some funding available to gap-fill projects. But what they found out was is they didn't make enough money available. So they've come to those who are readiest to proceed and said, rather than waiting six months for us to potentially put together more gap filler, we're looking for ways to get the ones that are ready off the table fast. Because the challenge we're running into with the construction is every week that goes by, a subcontractor calls you back up and says, oh, now the price is this. And so literally on a weekly basis, we're running into exposure of additional increase, additional increase. And so it's a really, you know, I've been developing for 20 years, and I've never seen construction costs do what they've done over the last 12 to 18 months. We're talking about a $2 million increase in what was a 6-point-something-million-dollar construction budget, construction contract. So we're talking about 20% to 25% increases over a 12-to-18-month period. It's unprecedented from my perspective, and the state realizes that. So they've said to us that they're looking for ways to be creative and find solutions that don't require a bunch of additional gap filler, because unfortunately for them, there's projects that have substantially bigger holes than we do, and they need that gap-filling money for those other ones. So I'm going to, you know, I'm kind of just got, you know, thumb in the air, thumb in the wind. This, I feel it's an 80% plus likelihood that they're going to just request we cut our unit count and move forward. And they want us to do that, most importantly, so that we can get off the books and on the board and in construction before costs continue to rise. But ultimately, we will get that feedback from them over what we, what we think will be the next seven to 10 business days. Though the only caveat trick there is, is with the holidays, sometimes that can get jammed up a little bit. So, you know, I don't foresee the third being a problem. But at the same time, if it is something that you think you would still support with 50 units, it might be helpful to just, you know, from our perspective, get it approved, and that way we can go back to the state and say, hey, just so you're aware, the town has approved this as well, we're just waiting on your approval.
I guess, in your, in your response there, Pete, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know that I heard that if it stays at 58, the project still happens. Or do you, is this, is this requiring?
I think that the project can still happen possibly. The thing is, is then we wait, and we're in the system, and we're waiting to determine, is the state going to come up with more funds? If so, when? And they've already told us that they're likely going to have to have a program, but the program is likely not going to happen until spring or summer. Which, as of now, you know, that, that creates some challenges for us. As far as construction costs continue to rise, we, we potentially could run into site control challenges with the owner. So we are going to do everything and anything we can to still try to make the project work if they said no to 58, to the cut, or if you said no to the cut. But we certainly are, still got a lot of road and work ahead of us to solve it.
Thank you, Pete. You guys? What thoughts?
I'm okay either way. I'd approve it tonight if this is made a motion.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-11B, ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Towne Fortville, Indiana Taxable Development Revenue Bonds, Series 2021, and providing the proceeds thereof to manage the loss LLC or an affiliate or permitted signing thereof. And authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
I second. All in favor? Aye. I need to see Tanya. Tanya, I need you to see for a second.
Thanks, everyone, for your considerations, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did we lose Tanya? Oh, she is.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you. Thanks, Pete. All right. Water treatment plant update, come on up.
Good evening. So Tish Fine Rose Construction, with your permission, I'd like to expand the agenda discussion a little bit tonight. We'll take it beyond the water treatment plant, talk about the status of Parks and Rec and Town Hall. Kind of expand the agenda a little bit. So last week, Joe and Dave and our team had a design review at the 60% engineering level. There were a few small minor tweaks that came out of that discussion, which are being incorporated into the engineering. But it's getting very close to being submitted to IDM for permits. So our plan is to, on December 22nd, submit to IDM for, for two permits. One is for erosion control, and then the second one is for early construction permitting. So it allows us to put buckets in dirt and start turning it. It doesn't finish up with mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, all of that is still to come. The other permit is for the Indiana Department Homeland Security for foundation and site work. So we anticipate that turnaround somewhere around 45 days. If the process goes well, and we anticipate that it will, that means that we'll be back in front of you in mid-January with our guaranteed maximum price. Because we'll have our permits, it'll be approved, we know the direction, we've got the design 60% complete. We'll be back with our GMP at that point in mid-January. Everything goes well, which we anticipate it will. Next week, we're going to be back here with Adam, working with him on some variances that the plant is kind of requiring us. They're very small. We'll be back in front of the planning commission and zoning appeals meeting in December for consideration. Everything goes well, we're going to mobilize in February, groundbreaking in March. New plant, still, we're dedicated to have it online by the end of the year. Everything goes well, and we anticipate well. Any questions on water treatment? Parks and Rec. All of our subcontractors have been issued, we're developing our schedule. As soon as we get confirmation of delivery, as we just heard, the supply chain pricing is all over the place still. We're locking things in as fast as we can. We have a tentative schedule to start the electrical infrastructure for the sport lighting systems at the ballfields and basketball court right around January 10th. So that'll be here pretty soon. We'll continue as that gets confirmed with the contractor to make sure Keith is aware of it. Shelter House is the next one that's going to get fairly significant renovation. We're going to do that kind of in two phases. We're going to hit the interior first, working with Heath. We've got January and February reserved for construction. Looks like with some delays, we're going to miss January. So we're going to probably hit renovation in February when everything comes in. And then, and then we'll do the exterior, kind of when the summer allows us to do the exterior. So that's going to be, instead of hitting the building all at one time, it'll be kind of a two-phase process, interior first. Questions on Parks and Rec? Town Hall. So we, we're at 50% of this design completion. We've issued subcontract. Talking to Joe and others, there's some concern about doing the extensive amount of work in an occupied facility and the amount and possibility of a disruption of service that it could cause with data and technology and those types of of issues. So right now, we are reviewing an option to bring in a couple of trailers for parking lot. Double wides. Relocating all the departments into that space for the construction term, which is, right now, it's calculated at about six months. If we do that, and we have the building for construction, then that saves us 30 to 60 days on the backside. So, and this is a schedule of about six months versus seven to eight, if we have people in building through a phased approach. We'll be very careful if we opt to go that way, but still, it's a disruption of service that we don't want to really have to deal with. I called Nine Star today, had a good conversation with them. They have the ability to set up temporary services for all your data, all your technology to the, to the new trailers. So they're involved, and I think that will go very fluidly. So that, we'll just do a complete transfer when you, when you move into the new space, the temporary space. And when you come back, you know, it'll be all done. We're not working around people. The only concern we have is the evidence room, we'll take care of that. That'll be the last piece of real estate within this building that will get transferred or worked on. So we're making provisions to make sure that that's taken care of. Right now, we're kind of slated for that transition to the temporary facilities to happen end of February, last week of February. And we are right now scheduled for construction to start here sometime around March 7th. Six months. So the question is, what do we do about meetings like this? One of the options we were thinking about is maybe relocating your public meetings to the community center. We'll make sure that you've got all the streaming abilities, all the technology that you need in place. But I think that's the option that we're looking at currently.
And what's the additional cost bringing in the trailers? Does it help?
It's still a work in progress. I think it's actually a deduct, because we're going to shorten the construction schedule, so it should be an advantage.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. You know where I am if you have any other questions?
New business, council to open sealed bids, stellar facade grant, program. Drumroll, please. This is a hard practice to. It takes some time, have you looked at these? All right. This is AIA, no. Pride Bar Construction. This was at the, this one, where's that all, both together? Yeah, Adam probably should come up here and help me read these anyway. This is the first time I've ever seen this sealed bid. Both two copies. So that's for both, both of them together? It's two copies of the same thing? Okay, yeah. Okay. The base bid on the project is $484,800. And advanced restoration. Next sealed bid. Oh, okay. This is the worst, okay. Thank you. Versus 402. Yeah. It was. It's advanced restoration. Advanced restoration sealed bid is 402,000 even. So is that all we got to do, or? Make a decision on this one? Take it under advisement? All right, we'll take this under advisement, thank you. Okay. Here comes the fun part, council to present service of year awards for town staff members. Missy Glacier is not here tonight, but she's five years. All right, and then Angie, come on up. Angie's got 15 years in here. Who's going to get a picture?
Thank you. You better check and make sure it's Facebook presentable.
Yeah. I should have worn a suit tonight, I just got busy today. The next one. Patrick Bratton, 15 years.
Congratulations, sure.
Christopher Hartman.
Chris could not be
Twenty-five years. My next one, you're, does this, this has been Bach and everything. The next one, council to present a community appreciation award to FAIA. Come on up.
Over here? I'll let, I'll let Bob. Let me take my glasses off.
Hey, Bob. What words do you want to say? Thank you so much. After ten big years of loving our town as much as we have, we appreciate being recognized by our peers. We do appreciate it, honest.
Thank you very much. It's been a good ten years.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see here, reports.
Joe, the only thing I've got to report on is same as I've been bringing on the streetlights on Main Street. As it turns out, I don't know if they really have the delivery date for the current lights that they were proposing. Turns out that they had found a steel light, steel pole that is exactly the same as the ones that were ordered, except the ones that were ordered were cast aluminum. And they're having a hard time, I guess, getting the aluminum and all that stuff put together. So they switched it over. I've given them, you know, go ahead, switch over to steel pole, it's identical, and they're still roughly six weeks out. But they were given, go ahead, go ahead and get those ordered up and get them rolling. Pretty dark up there a while ago, or super bright with those airplanes.
Yeah, some people were complaining that they're pointing towards the street and it's light in the morning, so.
I've been trying to find some other solution. In fact, I got a full solar light. I was hoping it was gonna be brighter and stuck it up there. And I was really disappointed with the amount of light that they did not put out. It's kind of overpowered by the other lights there up there. So we may keep looking for some other options.
Can we tilt them a little bit inward or differently? Okay, let's try that. Has there been another six weeks?
Has there been a resolution with Duke on the metering over the parking lot yet?
Duke's concern is they feel like the pole that they're feeding the meter off of, which is the same pole that always fed off of, is too close to the railroad right away, so they want CSX approval before they connect. And if you recall, that CSX was kind of what postponed this project for years again. So if we don't get a verbal from CSX, if Duke doesn't get that verbal within the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna work with Duke, see if we can find another solution.
Can you just put another pole in?
Not, not where that was at.
I mean, move it in.
That's all. Anybody have any questions for Joe? Thank you. He's not here. Adam, do you have anything?
Very quickly, I just wanted to mention for your benefit, for the public. We do have a planning commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December twenty-eighth at six thirty. So that'll be in person and via Zoom. We've got three items on that agenda. One is the fires estates primary plant. The other one that Doug had alluded to is the site plant for the new water plant. And then the third item is the proposed subway restaurant across from Speedway. And then lastly, Thursday, December thirtieth at six thirty, will be a board of zoning appeals meeting, BCA. And so there will be two cases. One is some variances for the new water plant. And then the second one is a special exception for boat storage at the CLM. Howl Company site. As far as here, good reminder on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Adam? Mrs. is not here.
Nothing unless you have questions.
Any questions? Would we still receive a, I can't spell it out, will we receive a activity report? I haven't seen one of those in a few months.
Dispatch had a hard time with the CAD system, so they couldn't collaborate all the calls. I just got the first one for November after missing three or four months. This last Thursday.
Okay.
So they're playing catch up to try to get all the August through now CAD reports consolidated. So I will get those to you and then into your report probably mid-January.
Perfect, thank you. My staffing update, sorry.
Oh, okay. Staffing update, Arts Back from the Academy, which is good. He is starting on the twenty-sixth. I have Warren Gamblin starting January first officially, but the third is his first workday. And then I still have a hole for somebody, which we're out of candidates on our candidate list. We've gone through the good ones that we wanted, and the rest of them, we're either gonna start a new process or just open a process for Academy certified only. Because currently I will have someone in Academy from January of this year through May of next year as slated. So I'd like to find someone with already the Academy, so I'm not pushed back until August of next year. So we're plugging away.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't have anything unless you have questions for me. Public comment? Thank you. Town council comments?
I was wondering about the two-hour party signs. We need to tell me those would go in.
The contractors that are, instead of working on the lights, they're also doing some of the poles. They've agreed to core the concrete, they've got some holes in the concrete they're supposed to go in. So I'm waiting for them to come back. They gotta move a couple other signs. So as soon as they get back.
I know the other signs that's up, but I couldn't remember what you said.
They've, they've got a handrail to put in, they've got to move a sign or two, so.
Okay, so it'll be before the street lights. Already getting the lights. Okay, thanks.
I don't have any comment. Thank you. Anything, Tanya?
I got nothing.
Okay. Well, this is the one I emailed you guys about, just as a follow-up. I do need to give the solid waste district a heads up or yes or no on if we're gonna have anybody replace the, the seat that I was filling at the first of the year. So I didn't receive any feedback from that, so, and I, and I already figured. You can stay on one more year, can't you? No. Right, so they're moving, so they're moving the time. So that, so ordinarily, yes, I'd be able to stay on, but since they're moving the time to the first Tuesday of every month at ten AM, that doesn't work with my schedule. And I, and I already told them that I didn't think, because they kind of wanted to know what I thought. I said, I didn't think it was gonna fit for you guys, but I didn't want to assume. So I needed to throw that out there. And if it didn't work with any of you, they already know that obviously I'm gonna have to step off of that, so. Every month, Tuesday at ten AM down courthouse annex. So I, I told her that we would give them an idea by the end of the year, but, but she knew that we were meeting tonight too, so she may be wanting a response, so. So if you want some more information on, obviously, I can fill you out on that. And I just have to schedule, we go to the great field, just check on the beast that day.
Every day, all day, all summer.
Okay, if you let me know.
Robert, does it have to be a council member?
Yes.
Oh, that's bad.
I know, right? Actually, the way that that's written was Fortville was never guaranteed a seat on that commission. It just so happened to be that one had been filling that seat before I came along. So if we do not fill it, they'll likely look to another municipality within the county to fill it.
Can I get a motion to approve minutes and signed vouchers?
I'll make the motion to approve and sign voucher. All in favor? Make a motion to adjourn at seven forty. Everybody have a happy holiday. Thanks for coming.